I got five thirty.
Please stand up to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, the United Republic, which stands by law, one nation, indivisible, and thirdly, just as a law.
All right, welcome everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Tom, please take the roll, please.
Mayor King.
Present.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Posma.
Present.
Baker.
Right here.
Baskin.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Pashusta.
Present.
Helly.
Here.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Welcome back on as our honorary council member. Recognize him tonight. Thank you for coming back, on. Item number one is a motion adopting the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two is a motion approving a minutes from September eighteenth. Two meetings.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nothing under recognitions and awards. Item number four is a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On to item number five, a series of resolutions, public hearing on sanitary sewer assessment, adopting assessment role. Ann.
For all of the public hearings tonight, all five through fourteen, each individual property owner was mailed a notice. It was also published in the paper. For each one of them, this was not the first notice that they have received. They would have received either a bill or some other type of notice, depending on which type of assessment it is, in the mail prior to being noticed in the middle of last month.
Thank you, Ann. We'll take them one at a time then. Five A is a public hearing on sanitary sewer assessment. Anybody here from the public wish to address five A? Hearing none, looking for a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thanks, Tom. Item number six, public hearing on assessment for miscellaneous sidewalk and driveway projects. Anybody here from the public wishing to speak on six A? Seeing none, looking for a resolution on six A.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yes.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Item number seven is resolution, public hearing on assessment for snow removal. Anybody here from the public wishing to address seven, snow removal? If not, looking for a resolution for seven A?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Next, item number eight is a public hearing on assessment for garbage and junk removal. Is anybody here from the public wishing to speak on eight? Junk and gar- junk and garbage removal? Hearing none, looking for a resolution for eight A?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number nine is a public hearing on assessment for weed and grass removal. Is anyone here present that wants to talk on weed and grass removal assessments? Hearing none, looking for a resolution for nine A?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number ten is a series of five, adopting assessment roles for a hearing on administrative citations. Item ten A is adopting the assessment role for park and rec. Anybody here from the public wishing to speak on ten A? Hearing none, looking for a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yes.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero.
Thank you. Item ten B is adopting assessment role on zoning. Is anyone here from the public wishing to speak on this issue?
Your Honor, there is someone here on this one.
On zoning, okay.
Yeah, Vern Olson Jr., his mother spoke to me. She's here with him a few months back about their citations, or about Vern's citations. It was a repeat violation of front yard parking, and the first citation went out in May, and then we sent a second citation out in July. And in July, Mrs. Olson contacted me to talk about it and see how we could resolve the issue. The issue was ultimately resolved, but we didn't discuss the fine specifically, at least from my recollection, and Ms. Olson wanted to ask counsel about giving them a break on the second fine that they received. I believe they did pay the first fine.
What's the amount they're looking to have?
Hundred and fifty dollars.
Counsel, what's your pleasure? We get these once in a while, and we struggle with them every time.
What was the first fine paid?
The first fine was a hundred dollars.
Okay. And was there a miscommunication or an issue that happened?
No, for violation of fine goes out with a letter. They don't get an opportunity to correct the problem.
Okay.
So their opportunity, once they got the fine, was to correct the problem.
Do the Olsons have anything else to say? Do you want to come to the microphone if you'd like? Just name and address, Vern, if you could, please.
Vern Olson, thirteen oh four Sixteenth Avenue Southwest. So, the first violation I understood, because I had my boat in my front yard, and then I had moved it into my driveway after that first violation, so I'd paid the violation, trying to show, you know, I'm trying to be a better person, and so on, from how I used to be. And the second violation came in, and I work all the time. I work seven days a week, hardly any time to make calls to the city, to make it up to the courthouse. Well, the second violation came, and I'd already moved my boat from that front yard to my driveway. And ever since I was a kid, I bought the house that I grew up in, from the walnut tree to the fence, has always been a driveway, a double stall driveway in the front there. And I had the boat parked in the second stall in front of where my walkway is from my door, and the city has sent me the violation for that. That's my whole reason for being here today.
It's a driveway to you, but not a driveway to the city. There's no material on it, it's lawn, or mud, or there's no...
There's gravel there.
Yeah, my understanding is there is some gravel there, but it's right in front of the door in the front yard, from the city's perspective, or at least from our perspective, what we would define as a front yard.
So as much of you used it that way, can you no longer use it that way? Would it be an impediment for you? Would it be a crisis if you only had one lane in your driveway?
No, no, I mean...
Have you been parking in it since these violations?
Yeah, I've had my boat right there the whole time.
Your what there?
No, he did, he did move the vehicle. That was the last issue, was the vehicle parked that you were describing.
The boat, they'd said that the boat was a foot over the walkway, cement, so I pulled the boat forward a foot.
And no more, is there compliance issues still?
Photographs, but it, you know, we just had a disagreement, I guess, on the second item, which was a vehicle parked in front of the doorway, what we considered the front yard, but he said, and his mother said, they had traditionally used as a parking area.
Can I show you a picture of...
You can come up here too, Ms. Olson, sure.
Yeah, I actually have some as well.
Why don't you start down there and just show the picture, if you want to show the picture.
That's the same floor you have, Holly?
Probably.
Let's put it on the projector.
Can we do that?
Yeah, let me put it on the projector.
Yeah, let's just move quickly, though, if we could, Ms. Olson. Picture, I thought we were just going to look at a picture. Is that the same picture she's showing?
That was the primary issue.
Just, let's scan it, let's just...
There we go.
Right, walking right by.
I think we need to trust what Holly's telling us and the city, and stick with the two fines.
You can step behind the microphone, please.
We bought this property in nineteen eighty-seven. It's always been a double driveway up at the front, in the front of the house. And for him to park on the street, his vehicles are going to get smashed right there. We have the car lot right next door. There's all kinds of cars pulling up there in front of his mailbox and stuff. When I go there, sometimes I have to park on the other side of the street to go in the driveway, because people are at the car lot parked in front of his driveway.
You understand, though, you can't park on your lawn, right?
Next to the tree there, that's all gravel. That's all gravel. In front, where my boat is, where my boat is right there, where my Trans Am is now, that's why I got in trouble, is where the boat is.
So you have a two-lane driveway, and then you're saying a third lane where you park in front of the house?
Oh, no, no, I don't park, I don't park up in the yard where that boat is, ever since that first violation.
Where the Trans Am is.
Yep, the Trans Am, and right next to it, all that gravel right there from the Trans Am over, that's the two lanes.
So it's a single-lane driveway?
With gravel on the yard.
And then gravel on the left, in front of the house?
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, and it's always been like that since we bought it in eighty-seven.
Thank you, folks. We have, I guess, a motion, Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
To follow the assessment, charge the one fifty. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, Tom, I want to take the roll call on that.
Motion by Councilmember Fisher, seconded by Councilmember Baker, to keep the hundred and fifty dollar charge as is, and I vote is in favor of such. Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Nay.
Motion passes six one, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Olsons, I'm sorry, you're going to pay that one fifty. It's just, I'm sorry, it's been that way since eighty-seven, but we can't park on...
Do the neighbors on that street have to pay bucks?
If you want to call them in as a...
Oh, you bet. They're there right now.
Based on neighbors calling in, so. All right, on to item number ten, rental housing, looking for adoption of the assessment role. Is there any public...
Your Honor, you just did the motion just for that one fifty, so we should do something for all, everything that we can.
Oh, okay, yep. So we're looking to adopt fully the zoning assessment rule.
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Next, Tom. Now, item number ten C, adopting assessment role for rental housing. I'm assuming I don't see anybody in the audience, and Elaine isn't probably going to be complaining about her assessment for rental housing. Looking for a resolution for item number ten C?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ten D is adopting assessment role for the sump pump. Need a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Finally, ten E, adopting a assessment role for the building department. Need a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number eleven, eleven is a public hearing on assessments for unpaid vacant property fees. Need a resolution for eleven A?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yes.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Twelve is a public hearing on the adoption on assessments for tree removal. Looking for a resolution for twelve A?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yes.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thirteen is a public hearing on hazardous housing abatements. Thirteen A, need a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yes.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Finally, fourteen is a public hearing on senior deferral assessments. Need a resolution for the fourteen A?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero.
Thank you. Under awarding bids, number fifteen is a resolution receiving bids for the Todd Park Trail Box Culvert. Stephen?
This is a bridge that is failing over Wolf Creek, and the plan tonight that was bid was to replace this with the box culvert. Flow would run through the box culvert. There's a little more clearance than what is currently there, which will provide for better flows. And we have gotten approval from the DNR and the Cedar River Watershed for this installation. So this last step of the project was to bid the work. Fitzgerald Excavating was the low bid at one hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars. Work that will be completed outside of this bid will be completed by our street department, where they will grade up to the new bridge, and do asphalt paving, and do some restoration work after the box culvert is installed. So there is a little bit of work that will be done by city forces above and beyond what council is reviewing tonight. Our project budget is, we have a one hundred thousand, five hundred dollar grant from the Hormel Foundation, and the remaining funds would come from Fund Forty-nine to cover the contractor work and installation, and we would recommend awarding this project to Fitzgerald Excavating.
Hey, council, any questions?
Stephen, did we do something with this a couple of years ago, or is that just the grant application?
It was probably the grant application that would have come to council. We have done work in-house to do some temporary, keep it open, but before the council would have been the grant application.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? If not, looking for a resolution awarding the bid, fifteen A.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number sixteen, receiving bids for group life insurance. Trish is here, if anybody has any questions. Otherwise, looking for a resolution for awarding the bid sixteen A?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Seventeen is resolution receiving bids for long-term disability insurance. Need a resolution for awarding the bid seventeen A?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. On to petitions and requests. Item number eighteen is a motion authorizing the auction sale of a two thousand and six Sterling snowplow truck. Stephen?
We have an item on our CIP to replace this piece of equipment. The replacement vehicle, the chassis, is built, and it's currently being equipped with all the necessary snowplow equipment, so we feel we can get rid of this truck at this time. Sometimes we'll review and look at doing a trade-in with the purchase of the new one. In this case, we were offered twelve thousand dollars for our trade-in. Last year, I believe, we were offered seventeen thousand dollars for our trade-ins. We just, we think there's more value there than the twelve thousand dollars. We'd like to see if it is there by putting this vehicle on the Hamilton auction sale that's coming up in Dexter, Minnesota. So we would request approval from council for sale of this piece of equipment.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Asking for a friend, how hard is this to use for your own driveway?
Sure give it a try, yeah. It's December third, if you want to put in a bid. Fantastic.
I go talk to my counsel.
Stephen, there's going to be, isn't there going to be a buyer's premium, or a seller's premium on this? It's a cap at a thousand bucks, so the net would be twelve thousand if the thirteen thousand dollar reserve was caught. And, you know, last year, snowplow was still sitting on Severson's lot, so. And do we have a tax impact if we go to auction rather than to... Trade-in?
I don't know the answer to that second question. I...
The answer is yes.
Okay.
I, I mean, you're, the taxable value is going to go down. I, I hope you get thirteen thousand, five hundred bucks for it, but, I mean, I think it's worth taking a chance. I just don't think we should have any expectation that we will do much better on that auction.
So if the reserve has not met, we can, the trade-in value, offer will stand, or no?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
We have currently signed a purchase agreement for the new piece of equipment without this as the trade-in.
Right.
The county goes all the time to Hamilton's Auction City. They put trucks and plows out there occasionally.
Once in a while, yep.
Yeah.
So this is really immaterial? It's not, the trade value isn't valid anymore?
We would ask, but, but, yeah, it was, we had to sign, I think, our purchase agreement last week, so just off by a week on this.
I'm hoping that in December, when that auction takes place, there's just a huge snowstorm. Great to buy a plow truck, and in a snowstorm, price will go up. All right, looking for a resolution or a motion on this auction item?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nope.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Nope.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six one, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number nineteen is resolution affirming the city's commitment to use Hormel Foods EP RP payments towards the costs related to the wastewater treatment plan expansion. Tom?
Last week, we were, Steve and myself and Ann were working with the PFA regarding our fourteen and a half million dollar bonding dollars, and PFA came back with a requirement for us to pass a resolution basically stating, we'll take Hormel Foods' payments towards the treatment plant when we bill them, and actually use them to make payments to those Uh, last week, we were, Steve and myself and Ann, we're working with the PFA regarding our fourteen and a half million dollar bonding dollars, and, uh, PFA came back with a requirement for us to pass a resolution basically stating we'll take Hormel Foods' payments towards the treatment plant when we bill them and actually use them to make payments to those vendors. Um, so we created the attached resolution, um, which they've, uh, looked at and approved for council to approve.
Okay, questions, council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Abstaining.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero with one abstaining, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number twenty is a motion approving fifteen hundred dollars from the fund balance for an in-home daycare provider appreciation brunch hosted by Austin Aspires, Craig?
Uh, thank you, mayor members, uh, there's been a working group established to visit about childcare in the city of Austin. Um, Austin Aspires and the chamber have been active participants in that, from some of those discussions, they talked about, uh, the impact of, um, a brunch to recognize the people in the childcare industry and the costs for, um, those that use their services versus what they're actually paid. That a recognition would, um, of appreciation would go a long way, um, so they brought forward this, uh, request and asked for financial contribution, uh, from others. Um, I know Mauer County threw twenty-five hundred dollars, and talking with the mayor, um, suggested fifteen hundred from the city, um, otherwise just looking for direction from the council.
Council, questions, item number twenty?
So, can I ask this question? Does this actually make an impact? And like, I think where I'm struggling is like, we're all pro daycare, but if we're gonna take fifteen hundred dollars, especially after we went like line by line around salaries and taxes and everything like that over the last couple of months, to buy lunch for what, twenty-five, thirty people, I'm struggling with that being the best usage of those, I'd almost rather make a donation that was going directly towards either Austin Aspires or a donation to, you know, support daycare, but I just struggle with kind of the return on investment, so I love the spirit of it, I'm not sure that I'm on board with spending these dollars in this.
Well, uh, I do think it's important to show support, um, when others have also shown the support, but I think it's a community effort, uh, daycare is important to us. However you want to skin the cat, if it's a fifteen hundred dollar donation to Austin Aspires to help promote it, or fifteen hundred bucks to go for this brunch at the country club to, to show that appreciation, I would think we need to send.
Did the idea of the brunch come from providers, were they part of the working group coming up with ideas of how to encourage providers?
Sure, it's been in the works about a year or so, right?
Yeah. It was providers and, I suppose, uh, experts in the field, I guess.
Elaine, do you have any comments, hon?
Um, I was not part of that request, so that didn't come past me.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of this, um.
No.
I, I think it's, it has nothing to do with our appreciation for home, home healthcare providers, I think it sets a dangerous precedent, um, and at the risk of offending many, I think this is Christmas cookies, I mean, I don't think it addresses the meaningful problems. Um, and, and we've got real meaningful problems that we gotta solve to get our childcare situation under control in Austin, and I don't think this attacks tho- those problems very well.
Posty?
I guess I'll say that I was, uh, attended at least one of the meetings where this was brought up, um, I think as most of you know, there's been some working groups currently led by Austin Aspires kind of focusing on the childcare issue. Um, and where this really sprang out of is, you know, there, daycare kind of, there's two main sectors, there's the center-based and the home-based. And even when we have these sort of meetings, we might have folks who represent center-based there, but home-based, it's basically impossible, they're a one-person operation, working sixty hours a week. So already scheduling this, I can't remember if it's a Saturday or a Sunday, because it's the only time these folks are available. Um, and, and so I do know that Janie Gibson, you know, this was done with some of their input as to what would be a way to help them feel like they are both appreciated and part of the conversations, I guess I would say, about childcare happening in our city. And this is the idea that came forth out of that working group.
I think historically, council has provided, uh, funding for groups, um, like this, I think there was something even in the consent agenda, this last consent agenda about, I can't remember the, who we're funding, but there's certainly these things come up. Uh, I've been asked to say a few words out there in appreciation, maybe become a bit uncomfortable if I'm saying some appreciative words and we're not standing behind it with our, with our dollars. I can certainly get through it, um, is it something you need to know?
Yeah, I, I think the intention is really good. I'm not sure that this is the specific use I would want to have of city taxpayer dollars, now, if it was something different, if it was for a scholarship fund, or it was a revolving loan fund to help providers with the offset, I just, I mean, if there's thirty people there for five thousand dollars in total for a br- I mean, that's like a hundred and sixty bucks a person for brunch, I don't know that just a brunch in and of itself is something, I can look somebody in the eye and say, yes, employees, we're gonna say no to this next request because we're spending, you know, your dollars as, as hard as we can, love the intention.
It's, it's sixty-four invitations, I know they got thirty signed up already, but they still have the end of the month to, to get the RSVPs in, so I don't know if they're gonna get, it seems like they got a decent amount of people RSVPing positively right now, but.
Can I just add something?
Sure, sure, Elaine.
Actually. Sorry.
Good evening, thanks for the opportunity to visit with you about this, uh, Elaine Hansen, Austin County Chamber of Commerce, and yes, we are part of that childcare group, and there are actually six different goals that we set forward, this was one of the six. But, um, I wasn't, uh, involved in making that decision to move forward on this, so I can't, uh, add to that, but there is some really good work going on, and I know we have a meeting, um, on Wednesday morning to continue looking at childcare and looking at perhaps one of the other five initiatives that we have identified, so just wanted to provide that direction or clarification, thank you.
So with that context and in recognition that this came out of a working group of people who are frontline working on this problem in our community, I move to approve.
Any further discussion? We have a motion on the table to approve fifteen hundred dollars, uh, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nope.
Nay.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Nope.
Baskin.
No.
Fisher.
Nay.
Pashusta.
I just want to say, I didn't get a chance to, to speak at the, just now, but, you know, I, I, I echo Jason that the intention is great, and if we weren't struggling so much with our budget, um, I would, I would definitely do this, um. So, a- a- and I too would rather see the money at this point with, with the way our budget is, going towards resources or helping them in some other way, so I'm gonna vote aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Nay.
Motion fails five-two, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Item number twenty-one is a resolution accepting the, uh, this donation to the city of Austin, twenty-five hundred dollar, very generous gift from International Paper Foundation for the Fire Department for turnout gear, so we appreciate International Paper for that, that gift, need a resolution to accept it.
So moved, second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any citizens here addressing, need to address the council? If not, moving along to honorary council member comments.
Aye.
Aye, yes, I do have something, um, Austin's Second Annual Pride Festival is this Saturday from twelve PM to eight PM. The Austin Human Rights Commission and the Austin Pride Board are dedicated to promote inclusivity, diversity, and equality for all individuals regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. This event serves as a celebration of diversity and serves as a platform for members of the LGBTQIA2S+ community and allies to come together in a spirit of acceptance, equality, and respect, and to uplift, elevate, and amplify, amplify their voices. We sincerely hope that you will join us in making our community pride events successful and a beacon of inclusivity. Together, we can create positive change, inspire others to embrace diversity, thank you.
Thank you. On, that's October seventh, this Saturday?
October second, yes.
Uh, the tents will be set up on the courthouse green space, uh, Justice Center green space, all right, noon to eight.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, on to reports and recommendations, Craig, anything?
I have nothing.
City council, we'll start with Laura.
Uh, the Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Department is deep in the process of hiring their next director, we received, uh, twenty applications, which is excellent, and more than we had received a year ago in a similar process. Four finalists rose to the top, and we've now interviewed three of those four with the fourth one tomorrow, so, um, I think it's looking very likely that we'll have a good quality candidate to, to make an offer to soon, and hopefully, uh, get them here and ready in the department soon. The, um, Culture and Arts Commission completed their strategic planning, and they're gonna focus on, um, public visibility of the commission and also enhancing our farmers' markets and that quality of life piece. I also want to recognize that, uh, each employee, uh, work group is going to meet with the consultants about the employee survey on Wednesday, uh, this coming Wednesday, October fourth, and, uh, I want to say thank you in advance to the employees for attending the meeting. Part of the purpose of that meeting is to hear ideas from employees about what would improve our, uh, culture as a workplace, and so any, um, thoughtful, um, responses would really be appreciated. We're, um, on the council, we want, uh, employees to lead here and, um, provide us with some direction forward, thanks.
Thank you, Laura. Mike?
Um, just one, two things, uh, one, at the most recent Discover Austin meeting, we were fortunate to have a representative of the current Holiday Inn, soon to be Doubletree, which they are still very hopeful that they are on track to complete all of their renovations and rebranding by February first, so the rooms are about halfway done, they've been working on conference rooms, continue to plug away, so we look forward to seeing that renovation complete. Um, the other thing is, I wanted to give a congrats to the Hometown Food Security folks on their new office located on Main Street, they're doing some great work. I saw that they got actually out and about into the county and supported some of the smaller food shelves throughout Mauer County, which I thought was really nice to see, that hunger's not just an Austin issue, it's a Mauer County issue, and helping everyone out, so great work by them.
Thanks, Mike. Jeff?
Uh, yeah, two things, uh, similar to what Laura said, for those of you that are, um, leaders at the city, I think it is important for all of you to talk to your employees and encourage their active participation in the survey results meetings. We have to have good ideas, we have to have buy-in from our folks if we want to start making things better. So if you can make sure you're talking to your troops, uh, second, Stephen, oh my gosh, I had the best experience with that contractor you're, you hired to do the sump pump inspection, nicest guy, couldn't hire him, tried. But, yeah, those guys are super professional, on time, and, and really did a nice job, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Jeff. Jeff?
Uh, nothing, Your Honor.
Jason?
Um, a couple of things from a Port Authority standpoint, so we've been working through with Jeff and Craig and the rest of the Port Authority outlining what the strategic roadmap is gonna be for the port over the next ten years, and we'll be having a discussion on our close-to-final draft at our next meeting here at the end of the month. Lot of really good discussion around kind of where do we want to be ten years from now in terms of, you know, economic development and some of the big things that we're hearing from the port, really prioritizing and for- or focusing on Creekside Business Park, we've got a great foundation with New Tech and now Hardy Mechanical and some of these other businesses, and so looking at, you know, how do we get really intentional with building out some of that and, you know, really supporting some of the vision that some of the tenants have there. Um, lot of conversation around, you know, making sure we're strategic with the land that we have in terms of land swaps, or buying and selling, and really thinking about kind of, not just ten years from now, but, you know, fifty years from now, where do we want to make sure that we're economically developing as a city? And then really making sure, working with our partners like the DCA to set up the infrastructure, whether it's financial infrastructure or anything else that will enable us in order to do that, so good momentum for where we're at right now. And it's been really fun listening to everybody kind of providing their, their perspective and feedback. Other thing to just keep in, on everyone's radar is, as the Port Authority quote-unquote owns part of the Hormel Institute, we've been working, um, with Gail and Dr. Clark and that group, they've got some really exciting stuff that they're talking about in terms of expansion, both short-term, um, with some of the bonding stuff, as well as longer-term with some really, really exciting vision for how they want to fully accelerate the institute and really make it a resource both nationally and globally, as well as locally with some of our K-12. So, early stages, a lot of stuff to go there, but it's really fun to see the excitement and vision coming out of that group, um, and then finally, go Twins.
Thanks, Jason. Paul?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Joyce?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Uh, the only ad report is on the mayor's meeting last Thursday, Elaine was on it, Craig was on it, and we heard from Hormel Institute, and I was, I'm super happy about this, they hired a PhD, um, lab-type person out of Penn State, uh, university to come and be the director of their new bio-imaging center and the expansion hopefully of that, and, uh, in that offer, all eight of her lab employees, techs, whoever they are, assistants, moved with her to Austin, and all of them are finding places in Austin and have been here one month, and they claim they just love it, so if we can lure people away like that for, I mean, what's going on at Hormel Institute, it's spectacular, but again, having face, places for these people to move into is also very impactful, so three of them have rented rooms at the Mill on Main, I'm super pumped about that, not sure what the other ones were, but that was specifically mentioned. So, uh, super great what's going on at Hormel Institute, and I'm glad that we can get some folks here and, and, uh, enjoy Austin as much as we all do, so. Thank you. With that, looking to adjourn to Monday, October sixteenth.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned, five minutes until work session?